Good evening. Good evening, President Carver, Vice President Pack, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Finch, Ms. Taylor, district staff, and our roomful of special guests tonight. Welcome to our DVUSD Awards and Recognition Ceremony for April 8th, 2025, the first ceremony of the final quarter of school. Tonight, we celebrate our first A-plus School of Excellence, some truly dedicated readers, DECA state champions, and a basketball team that made it all the way to the open quarterfinals play. We begin tonight by honoring our first of three DVUSD schools named an A-plus School of Excellence by the Arizona Education Foundation. Since 1983, the A-plus School of Excellence program has served to identify and recognize educational excellence in public schools throughout the state. Originally designed as a way to identify our state's candidates for the U.S. Department of Education's National Blue Ribbon Schools Award, the A-plus School of Excellence program has endured recognizing the best of the best in Arizona's public schools. Not only does the award program celebrate outstanding schools, but it also provides Arizona administrators with the framework for exemplary school self-assessment. The A-plus School of Excellence Award boosts public confidence in recognizing schools' efforts inspiring stronger parent and community involvement and even creating a positive economic impact in some of our communities. Schools that earn an A-plus of Excellence Award stand out for their dedication to providing exceptional education to students of Arizona, implementing practices that go far beyond the state's standards. The A-plus Award transcends test scores, letter grades, and examines every facet of school success. DVUSD is now the proud home of 25 schools that have been named an A-plus School of Excellence since the program's inception. Two of our schools that were named A-plus School of Excellence this year have been named for the very first time, one of them we're honoring tonight. Terramar Academy of the Arts earned this distinction of an A-plus School of Excellence for the first time in school history this year. The school's principal, Sharon Reiser, wrote this clever poem as a reflection of the accomplishment. "In the land of Arizona where the sun's blazing bright, Terramar Academy of the Arts shines like a guiding light. An A-plus School of Excellence, it's quite a big deal. They've earned a top honor and here's how they feel. With teachers and staff who ignite every spark, they guide students forward, leaving a lasting mark. Through engaging lessons and hands-on delight, they craft paths of learning that feel just right. Parents and community, they're in full swing, supporting the school like it's their thing. With hearts full of pride and hands held high, they make sure every child's dream reaches the sky. A student-centered focus where every need is met, with safe nurturing spaces, no dream is unmet. Extracurricular joy where talents can soar, building confidence and so-so much more. So here's to Terramar, it's as good as it gets, an A-plus School of Excellence, no room for regrets. They're rocking and rolling with brains and with flair, and let's face it, they've earned a victory dance in the air." Congratulations to Arizona Educational Foundation's A-plus School of Excellence Terramar Academy of the Arts. Next, we move on to a group of students who always seem to bring home the hardware each year during their own competitions. These students are part of DVUSD's Career and Technical Education, or CTE, programs, in particular, DECA. First tonight, we celebrate Barry Goldwater High School students whose performances and competitions put them at the top of the podium this year. Junior Haley Dobbs earned a state title in Marketing Communications. During this competition, participants were challenged to perform marketing communications and marketing functions and tasks that inform, persuade, or remind a target market of ideas, experiences, goods, or services. Congratulations to Marketing and Communications DECA State Champion Haley Dobbs. Two more BGHS Bulldogs earned the top spot for their performances as a team in the Hospitality Services Team Decision-Making Competition. Juniors Abigail Young and Everett Henson had this to say when reflecting on their state championship. "Winning a DECA State Award in Hospitality Services Team Decision-Making has been an incredible achievement for our team, one that reflects both our hard work and dedication. Preparing for this competition was a journey that demanded collaboration, strategy, and constant refinement. Through the multiple practice sessions with our DECA chapter, we honed in on the ability to analyze problems quickly, think critically under pressure, and present cohesive solutions. Earning this award is a reflection of the dedication and hard work we invested in our preparation, and it has inspired us to keep striving for excellence." Congratulations, DECA State Champions and Hospitality Service Decision-Making, Abigail Young and Everett Henson. And more importantly, to stay in DECA, and more importantly, to stay in DECA our first year of competing, since at that point, Sam had not taken any finance classes. That year, last year, we got eighth place in FTDM, still finals, but we didn't reach the podium. Winning the Financial Service Team Decision-Making event at Arizona State Conference this year after not making it to the top three was incredible, but our real fulfillment came from our preparation. After placing second at districts, we realized our case studies skills were strong, but our preliminary testing needed improvement. Over the next month, we focused heavily on the Finance Cluster Exam using flashcards, practice tests, and practice performance tracking spreadsheets. In addition to the FTDM, we competed in Financial Consulting, where we built a portfolio for a college athlete. Ironically, our final FTDM case closely resembled this event, allowing us to apply what we had already mastered. Despite an unexpected moment where our judge spilled coffee on his laptop, we still secured first place. Since SCDC, we've intensified our ICDC prep, defining 600-plus finance terms and coding a Roblox quiz to reinforce business concepts. We're also collaborating with DECA students nationwide to sharpen our skills. Mr. Neighbor has additionally shown us many resources. He has been a very helpful support system, and we're thankful that we are also very proactive about our own studying. Winning state has fueled our ambition, and we're excited to compete at the national level soon in Orlando. Congratulations to the Boulder Creek High School team of Parker White and Sam Ebbie on their state championship and financial services for DECA. Participants are challenged to perform management functions and tasks focusing on high-level financial and business planning, including collections and organization of data, development and the use of reports, and analysis of data to make business decisions. Concepts include understanding the source and purpose of financial statements, the impact of management decisions on statements, and the analysis and interpretation of data for corporate planning. Congratulations to DECA State Champion in Business and Finance Nathan Narick. I don't believe he's here, but we wanted to recognize his efforts. For the past 11 years, the Deer Valley Education Foundation has funded the reading competition, Battle of the Books, for fifth and sixth grade students across DVUSD. Competing in teams of two or three, students from throughout the district tested their knowledge during three exciting school competitions. Four books are pre-selected for the three competitions during the year, which means that students read and answer questions from a total of 12 books outside of their regular schoolwork. The level of readers competing in Battle of the Books varies from students who read below grade level to students who are on gifted programs. Battle of the Books improves reading comprehension, builds vocabulary, teaches teamwork, and good sportsmanship. Following the competition, Deer Valley Education's Foundation generously donates books to each participating school's library, based on the number of students participating at each school. To date, the Deer Valley Education Foundation has donated more than 20,000 books to the DVUSD libraries. This year, the Star Readers Team of fifth graders representing Copper Creek Elementary School claimed the title of Battle of the Books Champions. Duke Forbes, Haley Frolic, and Eliza Olson hit the books hard and proved that they deserved to be crowned champions. Copper Creek's library clerk and Battle of the Books team coach had this to say about their impressive students. "Our Star Reader Team had a good showing in our first battle, but finished behind three other teams and tied with another. The team's competitive spirit and dedication to excellence was then ignited, and they arrived super-prepared for Battles Two and Three, where they won outright and missed none of their questions, achieving a perfect score. Several team members attended study sessions hosted by Ms. Meyerhofer before the battles, where the students were quizzed and quizzed each other on details of each book. Team member Haley read all 12 books this year and even read them multiple times to prepare for competition. Each team member played a role in the team's successes, though. The staff, students, administration, and library clerk at Copper Creek are so proud of Duke Haley and Eliza for their excellence this year. Seeing kids read quality books and get excited to discover new genres, authors, and titles, and then discuss these books with friends is absolutely heartwarming. Thank you to the board and our Deer Valley Education Foundation for this recognition and always supporting Battle of the Books. Congratulations, 2025 Battle of the Books Champions, Star Readers from Copper Creek Elementary School, Duke Forbes, Haley Frolic, and Eliza Olson." And finally, tonight, we move on to a team that has proven over the last several seasons that they are a force to be reckoned with on the hardwood. The Boulder Creek High School Men's Basketball Program journey has been remarkable over the past several seasons. In 2022, they made it to the 6A Final Four before the Open Division existed, an achievement that set the tone for what was to come. They didn't stop there, though. In 2023 and 2024, they returned to the 6A Final Four, back-to-back, proving that their hard work, dedication, and teamwork were unmatched. This past season, 2024-2025, their success continued as they captured the Nike Tournament of Champions bracket title, showcasing their skill on one of the most prestigious stages in high school basketball. They also earned a well-deserved runner-up finish at the Tarkanian Classic, solidifying their place among the nation's elite programs. On top of that, they made an impressive run to the Open Elite Eight, or Quarterfinals, in the Arizona Open Tournament this season, making another significant milestone in their exceptional basketball careers. Adding to their list of accomplishments, this incredible group captured back-to-back region championships in 2024 and 2025. These victories were a testament to their resilience, grit, and unwavering focus throughout the seasons. They didn't just play basketball, they embraced the grind, and they proved time and time again that they were a team. Off the court, their coaches noted that while they're incredible athletes, they're even more extraordinary people. This group of young men remained humble, hardworking, and always focused on playing as a team. The chemistry they shared was evident in every game, every practice, and every moment they spent together. For their coaches, coaching them was not only a privilege but an honor, and being part of their lives over the last several years has been truly a rewarding experience. The coaching staff said this about the group of elite collections of young individuals: "And while their time as Jags is coming to an end, we're confident that they're going to be going on to become outstanding husbands, fathers, and leaders in whatever path they choose. Their character and values are what continue to shine through in the next chapter of their lives. We will be their biggest fans as they move on to do great things. We're incredibly proud of them and everything they've accomplished, both on and off the court. They'll forever hold a special place in all of our hearts." Congratulations to the open state quarterfinalists, the Boulder Creek High School Boys Basketball Team. Tonight's Awards and Recognition Ceremony, the regularly scheduled board meeting will begin in just a few minutes.
This meeting of the Deer Valley Governing Board to order at 7:04. Let the roll call show that Ms. Simicek, Mrs. Fisher, Dr. Pack, Mr. Carver are all present in person. Mr. Botfield is with us telephonically. Dr. Z, if you could be so kind as to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence? Thank you. First up on the agenda tonight is item 3A. Oh, sorry, we should probably adopt the agenda first. Apologize for that. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you vote, Mr. Botfield?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Now then.
Mrs. Fisher, will you vote for you? Okay, everyone up is gone, thank you. Five votes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Now, item 3A, Dr. Pack.
I move that the Governing Board accept Administration's recommendation for the Principal of Esperanza Elementary School, Amber Landis.
Is there a second? Ms. Moffett.
Good evening, President Carver, Governing Board members, Dr. Finch, and guests. We'd love to introduce to you Amber Landis. Amber previously worked for us as a teacher and a site administrator, and we're bringing her back over from the Washington School District, where she currently is serving as a principal, and we're quite excited to have her join us as Esperanza's new principal.
Is there any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Back to the district, Mrs. Landis. If you'd like to share a few words with us.
Governing Board President Carver, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Finch and Cabinet, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited to come back home to Deer Valley. I'm excited to meet and work alongside the staff, students, and community at Esperanza and continue the great journey that they're on.
Questions, thank you. Move on to item 3B.
I move that the Governing Board accept Administration's recommendation for the Principal of Sierra Verde School, Kim Lanis.
Second.
Ms. Moffett. Dr. Z.
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, Administration, we are very pleased to recommend Mrs. Kim Lanis for the position of principal at Sierra Verde. Kim has been a wonderful district resource for many years, and we know that she will continue the great work at Sierra Verde. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lanis, into your new campus, to share a few words with the community. Share a few words with the community.
President Carver, Dr. Finch, and members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I greatly look forward to working with the members of the amazing Sierra Verde School, and just can't wait to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lanis. We will pause the board meeting for a few moments, celebrate with these two young ladies. If you'd like to join them out in the foyer for pictures and flowers. If there's no objection from the board, I would like to skip item 4A while we wait for Mr. Miglerino. Ah, he's five A and B also. Well... We're just going to continue our pause. Alrighty then. Speak of the devil, any peers? Okay, so item 4A is district reports, finance report. Mr. Miglerino, whenever you're ready.
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, this evening we have the financial report to share with you through the end of March. And this report will be updated as we go through the remainder of our fiscal year in June. But it's currently showing almost $2.2 million worth of projected carryforward with a almost $2.2 million worth of over expenditure on the school budget line. That, as I've mentioned in previous reports, will likely be offset by cash accounts within the school operations as they make adjustments towards the end of the year. With that anticipation, we should have about a $4.4 million carryforward. We're right currently trying to target at least $6 million in carryforward in the budget projections that we have for next year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have regarding the March report.
Any questions for Mr. Miglerino? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 5A. Mr. Miglerino? Yep, sorry, Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the FY '26 Negotiated Solution Team salary recommendation.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Now, Mr. Miglerino.
So, there has been one change that we want to bring to the attention of the governing board from when this was previewed back at our March 25th board meeting. So, I'm not going to go through every slide. I'd be happy to, if that's the pleasure of the board. But what has changed is that the classroom site fund allocation has become known. It was released at the end of March, as per statute requires. And so, on this last slide here, we actually have the dollar amount. So, it's increasing from $792 per weighted student count, which is what the current allocation is, up to $842 in fiscal year '26. That's a combination of two factors. One, it is based on sales tax, and sales tax has been increasing. But also, when it is determined to be per weighted student count, the weighted student count has reduced. So, that has driven the per student amount up. But due to a miscalculation that we made in FY '25, even with the increase, we are going to use a little bit of the carryforward to ensure that the amount per teacher remains the same. This was not included when this was previewed in March, at the March 25th board meeting, again, because we did not have the allocation from the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. But we are including it now as part of the salary recommendation so that all of the information will be known for those that are eligible for the classroom site fund as well. We actually bring the classroom site fund back to the board as a separate item in a future meeting, but this would allow it to be memorialized in the salary recommendation if somebody wanted to find it in this location as well. And again, that amount in the base pay, $7,610 out of the classroom site fund, an additional $240 in the instructional improvement fund, or sometimes referred to as the Proposition 202. The slang term for that is the gambling compact. And you can see the total there with them being combined. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. Oh, and just as a reminder, the Negotiated Solution Team, because I passed over all those slides, has agreed to the, to this. I won't say that they are necessarily happy about that, about the salary recommendation, because there is no increase in this year, and it does include a furlough day, as we've previously discussed. But they are, they did reach agreement with all the employee groups. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
There any questions from the board? Just got one for you, Dr. Finch. I'm sorry, Mr. Miglerino. You say that everybody's in agreement, so does that mean you've got unanimous consensus amongst all groups? That what you're presenting, everybody's on board with?
President Carver, so the way that we actually vote is, there are three options for each member. They can agree with the recommendation, they can live with the recommendation, or they can turn it down. Everybody was at least at a point where they could agree with it. And I don't, the majority of the people actually were supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Botfield?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Botfield.
I'll vote nay. We haven't had any meaningful budget discussions. I don't like the idea of cutting employees without looking at reasonable options.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Item 5B, Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the human resources changes, part-time limited non-renewal list, and contract renewal list.
5B?
She's on the, she's on the topic consent. We need to get into section five.
Highlighted but not clicked. Okay, take two. There is a fly-up here, by the way. I move that the governing board accept the Deer Valley Unified School District FY '24 Financial Audit and Compliance Questionnaire completed by CWDL by roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miglerino?
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, the information that we have regarding our fiscal year '24 audit has not changed since this was previewed back at the March 25th meeting. So, in the interest of time, I won't go through the information again, but be happy to answer any questions. We did provide the board with our corrective action plan as well for the noted findings.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Fisher?
Jim, what exactly is it where? I mean, we do this roll call vote. We are not voting that we were informed ahead of any of this occurring. This is just, we're just voting to accept this is where we're at, correct?
President Carver, Ms. Fisher, yes. So, the statute requires that the board accept the report. You're not approving the report. There is no...
Oversight.
Yeah, no oversight or modifications that the board can necessarily submit to the audit firm to change the reports. It's just that the, that the report has been completed and that you have been given the opportunity to review it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? By roll call? Ms. Simicheck?
Yes, aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Botfield?
Aye.
Dr. Pack?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to consent, items 6A through 6H.
I move that the governing board approve consent agenda items 6A through 6H.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Item 7A, Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to pre-approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I just have one comment. Because I know I'm going to get asked, well, how come you're approving this one who has an 850? Your book is different. If you want an explanation, contact me and I'll be happy to give it to you. I'll be happy to go over the whole thing of your book with you. So, I'll vote aye.
Thank you. Item 8A. Yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Taylor. Thank you. Item 8A, Mr. Miglerino.
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, we bring before you a recommendation from the Arizona School Boards Association to modify Board Policy AA. This is a preview of that. We are recommending that the board accept the ASBA recommended changes that essentially do away with the exhibit that identifies the the legal boundaries of the district, and just note that they will be found in the files of the district as opposed to providing all of the legal boundaries of the district itself. So, be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any discussion from Mr. Miglerino regarding Policy AA?
Why did they make the change? Did a law pass for something, or why are they making this change?
Probably because the, all of the pins that surround our district would be a lot of pages. ASBA's recommended that. So, yeah, I think that's probably why, and it would make more sense if the district called that.
I think to Dr. Pack's point, a couple of meetings ago when she spoke to ASBA, they were going through the A grouping of policies, and this just happens to be the first one on the top. And I don't, I don't read the change as a legislative mandate, just as a cleaning up type of proposal. This is where we used to be able to find the information. It would be easier and less cumbersome to find the information in this other location. Sound about right?
President Carver, that is correct. And the legal description is not as meaningful as the actual maps itself. Most people don't know where the northeast corner of Section 4 in Township 4N Range 3E is.
Just type it in, it comes up in the map.
Yeah, I mean, there are ways to find these things. But the, the actual map with the county assessor's office is, I think, a little bit more easier for the end user to be able to really find what they're looking for, which would be the actual map of the boundaries.
Any further discussion from Mr. Miglerino? Okay, item 8B, Dr. McCusker.
Good evening, governing board, President Carver, Dr. Finch, and community. This evening I will be discussing revision, a recommended revision to Policy JLDA. This has to do with the certification of school psychologists in a public school setting. And what the recommendation outlines is that there is a difference between a certified school psychologist and a licensed school psychologist. And one of the primary differences between the two is really the setting in which they work. Certified school psychologists through the Arizona Department of Education work in educational settings, mostly with students, whereas a clinical psychologist or licensed psychologist will usually work outside of educational settings with adults, with diagnosing, and also providing direct therapy.
Any questions for Dr. McCusker regarding this change, Policy JLDA? Mrs. Fisher?
My concern is, what is it that, just because they're in a school district, does not mean that they're necessarily only doing what one would do versus the other? So, do we have unlicensed individuals doing the higher level of care, but just because they're in a school, don't, we're not requiring the licensing?
President Carver, Mrs. Fisher, I believe I understand your question to be, do we have non-licensed psychologists practicing school psychology in Deer Valley? Is that correct?
No, practicing a higher level, not just the standard of school psychology. In other words, you said, you're licensed one way for schools, you're licensed a different way for everything else. Just because they're in the school, are we ensuring, are we ensuring that they are only working up to that level and not going beyond?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Now, I understand your question. We do, in Deer Valley Unified School District, we have both licensed psychologists as well as certified psychologists through the Arizona Department of Education. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, we are able to provide counseling support via the vehicle of an IEP. But most often, school psychologists, although they do many amazing things, their priority is psychometry and the evaluation of students for potential identified disabilities.
Any further discussion for Dr. McCusker?
Just to follow up, question, I think I understand. So, right now, it excludes a school psychologist, and we want to follow ASBA's recommendation to include the school psychologist.
President Carver, Dr. Pack, what this language from ASBA is actually recommending is to ensure that school psychologists that are certified by the Arizona Department of Education are recognized in this policy, but it doesn't exclude licensed psychologists from being practitioners. They must also hold an ADE certification. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. McCusker. Item 8C, preview the annual K-12 use of facility field fee schedule for '25-'26. Mr. Miglerino?
Hi, President Carver, members of the board, and Dr. Finch. We bring before you as a preview item the facility use or facility rental schedule for next year. So, this would be effective July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026. And what we are recommending is a 5% increase in the rental charges for Class 2 and Class 3. Class 1, there is no charge. And we rounded up to the nearest whole dollar so that we wouldn't be dealing with the cents. Uh, so it's as little as a dollar increase, up to a, a several dollar increase, um, for some of the, uh, larger spaces, uh, in, in the rental. We did not adjust the utility, uh, charge, uh, as that was done, uh, recently due to a rate increase for APS and we rounded that as well when that was done. Uh, so we think that that increase, uh, was sufficient, uh, to address the rising, uh, utility costs, uh, that we anticipate for next year. Uh, so this is a preview item and we would like to bring it back for formal consideration, uh, at the, um, second meeting in April. Um, but I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the facility rental, uh, schedule.
Any discussion from the board from Mr. McGlorino? Dr. Pack?
Can you please just clarify for the newbie? What's the difference between class one, class two and class three, since there's no charge for class one?
Um, yes, so class one would be, uh, for those that have the, uh, same mission as, um, the school district itself. So, uh, think of this as our PTAs, um, are a perfect example for that. Uh, class two would be any nonprofit that, uh, wants to rent our space, uh, but doesn't necessarily have the same charge of, uh, serving students. Um, and then class three would be for-profit, uh, entities that would re- like to rent our space.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. McGlorino. On to item eight D. Mr. McGlorino?
President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, uh, this item is a preview of the resolution that our attorneys have put together, uh, calling for an M and O override election, uh, for the November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, uh, election. It would be a special election. As we have mentioned, uh, previously, um, the last approved override was done in November of two thousand nineteen. Um, we will be subjected to the first year phase down, so one-third of the, uh, override will be reduced in fiscal year twenty-six, um, because it has not been renewed to date. Um, our recommendation, the administration's recommendation is to call for the election in November of twenty-twenty-five to have the fifteen percent M and O override renewed. Um, it would not be effective until the following fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-seven. Uh, so we still will suffer the fate of the reduction, a one-third reduction, uh, of the override for next fiscal year. Uh, but this would, uh, pending the outcome of the election, uh, could restore the, uh, fifteen percent override that we have enjoyed for a, a number of years now. Uh, as a reminder, we have had an M and O override in place going back to nineteen ninety-one. And the reason that most districts that we compare ourselves to, all of our neighboring districts as well, have some form of override, if not multiple overrides, is due to the, uh, I'll say minimalistic funding level that exists within the state of Arizona, um, for, for schools. Uh, this is, I, I prefer to call it local support. How much local support does the community want to add, uh, for our operating budget? And again, there is a distinction between the, uh, M and O override and other elections like a bond or, uh, a district additional assistance override, that this is our operating budget. This is what we use to be able to pay our staff, keep the class sizes low, uh, enjoy things like full day kindergarten, other things that we have, uh, funded, uh, thanks to having the local support that we've had for, for many decades. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Questions for Mr. McGlorino? Dr. Pack?
You say we have an override since nineteen ninety-one and we're asking for fifteen percent. Has it always been fifteen percent? Or ten percent sometimes? What does the picture look like, the historical picture?
Uh, President Carver, um, Dr. Pack, that's a great question. No, it has not always been, um, fifteen percent. Uh, it has been fifteen percent for the last two, I believe, uh, uh, elections where it was approved. So it's been, uh, for probably eight years. I'd have to confirm that. I, I believe it's eight, a minimum of eight years that, uh, it has been, uh, at least fifteen percent. Uh, prior to that, uh, there were, there was an option to have two M and O override elections. Uh, you could have a five percent and a ten percent, um, which of course, if you add those together, would be fifteen percent. Um, but the, the statute just, uh, combined them into one, up to fifteen percent. Um, but it was originally approved back in nineteen ninety-one as a ten percent, um, uh, M and O override.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Fisher?
What is the cost of the override? Election?
President Carver, uh, Ms. Fisher, the cost to have the election?
Yes.
Um, it will be several hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we pay the full cost. It would be an all mail-in election. Um, and I don't, um, the, uh, county school superintendent and the county elections departments, uh, actually sets the rate and we, we have not received the final information from them. I, I would say it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred thousand dollars to hold the election because we have to pay for all the, uh, postage as well as the, the cost for the election.
Do you happen to know we paid for last year's election, just the override portion?
Uh, last year's election was much less expensive because, uh, it was a shared cost election with all the other items that were on the ballot. I don't know what will be on the ballot this November. Um, uh, so, uh, last year was much less than the three hundred thousand dollars that I, uh, took a wild guess at.
Don't you know we paid for Peoria?
Um, we have that information. I don't have it, um, to be able to quote, but it would be more in line with the three hundred thousand dollars because it was a off-cycle election.
Anyone else? Sure.
Um, can you explain if we vote in November two thousand twenty-five, how it's not effective two thousand till, until two thousand twenty-seven?
Yeah, President Carver, Dr. Pack, the, the taxes will already be, uh, established for fiscal year twenty-six by the time the election, uh, is held. And so there's no mechanism to collect the tax, uh, to be able to make it effective in fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, but the election would stand and it would have standing for, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven, uh, in which we would have enough time to collect for, uh, the additional local support.
Thank you.
I've got a couple for you, Mr. McGlorino. Um, I know that we've, I, I assume anyway that the ask is to maintain the fifteen percent that, that we are exiting right now on the M and O, but the community's spoken quite loudly the last two election cycles that, um, they want us to put our best foot forward and sharpen our pencils. I- is there, or has there been any thought to rolling that back thirteen, twelve? Anything along those lines?
Uh, President Carver, we've had conversations about the, um, the actual percentage amount. And, um, it is negligible in terms of the cost impact, just due to the assessed valuation of our district, um, i- in terms of the savings that you would realize, uh, from going to a smaller percentage than the fifteen percent that we've enjoyed for such a long period of time. And all of our neighboring districts have at least, um, thirteen, if not fifteen percent for those that have an M and O override, uh, in place. So in order for us to, um, maintain a competitiveness, uh, our recommendation is for fifteen percent, but certainly the board can pick any percentage from up, up into, including not calling for the election or zero percent, uh, all the way up to the maximum, which would be fifteen percent, which is our recommendation.
Understandable. At what point in time would the board make a recommendation? Would it be?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of it.
Did I blink out there? At what point in time would the board make a recommendation on a percentage? Would that be at the, when it becomes since it's a preview item now?
Uh, President Carver, that is correct. So it's a preview item. Uh, so part of the conversation today is to, uh, let it be known that the administration's recommendation is the fifteen percent. Um, it's a simple change to the document that the, uh, attorneys have crafted, the resolution to change the percentage. And, um, and, and we would be more than willing to do that based on input from the governing board. Um, or it could be even changed at that meeting and we would just modify the documents accordingly.
I understand. Um, uh, based on the information that you're giving me and, and the fact that two or three points in the grand scheme of things in our budget don't make that big of an impact. I, I know here where you're coming from, but I think it would be a, um, good gesture, uh, to come with twelve or thirteen. And then, uh, once we can resolve the trust issues that the community has developed with school boards, then maybe we could come back with fifteen a few years later if it's still necess- legislature hasn't found a way to alleviate the burden on, on the, on the local taxing authority, but uh, my two cents would be to propose something short of fifteen, uh, so that we can demonstrate that we're, we're not deaf to what the community's been telling us the last two years. Um, additionally, I know that I, I, I have heard, I shouldn't say no, I have heard that Peoria is considering, uh, taking theirs back out for fifteen and that maybe Westmech would be joining in. Would either one of those districts, if they were to decide to go to the, uh, electorate to ask for those, would that help with our cost or since they're entirely different districts, it would, it wouldn't affect our cost?
Uh, President Carver, um, the Peoria School District would not affect, uh, any of our costs because, uh, there is no overlapping, uh, taxation between the two districts. Um, and just for the record, they did already call for their election for a renewal, um, but it will be an increase to fifteen percent. They're currently at thirteen, they're asking for fifteen. Uh, and there is no provision to allow for the electors to pick the percentage that they're, uh, comfortable with. Uh, so, um, the question has to be specific, so you have to identify the percentage. Um, the, uh, but, uh, them already calling for the election will not have any impact on our, uh, at least the cost for our taxpayers. Uh, certainly there might be, uh, some shared messaging, um, that they're calling for something similar that we're calling for. Whether that's a, a, a plus or a minus, uh, I, I think that would be in the, in the mind of the audience. Um, but to your point about Westmech, I believe they are considering going out for a bond election. And if they do go out for a bond election, that would have a, uh, because of the overlapping jurisdiction, that would have a cost, uh, uh, for our district as well as all the member districts, including the Peoria School District as well.
Understood. Um, so my, my two cents tonight is just that I, I think we need to roll it back and, and thirteen doesn't hurt the district, but it shows the community that we're trying. Um, I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but that's my two cents. Does anybody want to follow up?
I do.
Um, Mrs. Fisher?
So Westmech would be an additional cost because we all share them, so we're paying, we would additionally pay for theirs as well, correct?
I'm sorry.
It wouldn't be a cost savings, it would be a additional cost. Their election, because we'd have to pay our portion of their election, question. Or would it all even out since the questions?
Uh, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, if the, if your question is, would there be an additional cost for, uh, to the Deer Valley School District for a Westmech question on the ballot? The answer is, uh, that's incorrect.
So it would be the other way?
It's the other way around. If there's a Westmech question, we share in the expense, um, of the election, so they have their expense, we have our expense, uh, it would help defray.
Slightly reduce ours. Um, is there anything, I, I, when I saw Peoria go out for their override, um, because Peoria's had a hard time for a lot of this in, in the past. But what came to mind is all the work that they've done, to show, um, they are active with the community, they're involved with the community, they've, um, you know, these are the things that we've been able to do, these are, um, positives. Um, is there anything, I mean, we, we've refused to have budget meetings, we've refused to have really anything on our agenda to show our, our community that we, um, value their opinion. What, is there anything, I mean, what, what would justify us going out again without making any effort to engage our community first? I don't know if that makes sense. I, um, I mean, I think I said at a previous meeting that perhaps if we could show our community, bring them in, let them see where we're at, let them understand, maybe then they would support it. Um, but, but none of that has occurred and, and from what I understand, none of it's going to occur.
Uh, well, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, I will, uh, just remind the board that the Budget Committee that did meet, uh, several times earlier in the year, um, ended to surveys, um, uh, did make the recommendation to call for the renewal of the election as a result of the input that we received from, from multiple sources.
But that's just the one small group that's kind of been every year, correct?
We, we do, that group does meet annually, yes.
But the surveys go to thousands of people, tens of thousands. Correct. Mr. Carver? Yes, Dr. Finch? Did you want to go, Stephanie?
Just real quick.
I was just gonna go after Stephanie.
I just want to acknowledge, um, I think that anything less than fifteen percent will start to affect our, um, our students and negative, have a negative impact on their learning and their outcome. But I do want to acknowledge what, um, President Carter said. Um, I am looking at the fact that we have run it a couple of times now and we haven't been so, so maybe we need to try something and tweak something just a little bit different.
Okay, Dr. Pack?
Mr. McGlorino, thank you again for explaining things to me. Um, I just have a follow-up question. You were saying it would cost approximately three hundred thousand dollars to do the paper mail-in ballot for two thousand twenty-five. It would not take effect two thousand twenty-seven. If we were to wait until two thousand twenty-six with the regular election, not paper, how much would that cost and when would that take effect?
President Carver, uh, Dr. Pack, uh, it would, there would be a, a small decrease. It would not be as much as the decrease from, uh, last year's election because that was a presidential election. Um, but there would be, it would just depend on what other items are on the ballot and it's too early to know what those are at this point. Um, but I will tell you, if we did delay or wait, uh, until November of twenty twenty-six, we would suffer the second phase down of the existing M and O override, which would be another, um, eleven million dollars. So that would be a total of twenty-two million dollars that would have to be reduced out of our budget, uh, before knowing the outcome of that, which, uh, again, would be i- in the hands of the voters. Um, so it would, there, there would be a, an additional reduction to our budget that we would have to endure in fiscal year twenty-seven because the funds would not be available until fiscal year twenty-eight, if the election was in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. And I, I do want to acknowledge, uh, I agree with Ms. Simicheck, we don't want student learning to be impacted, but I also, um, do want to chime in with, with President Carver to acknowledge, um, the public's speaking out and, and even if it's a negligible amount, perception is reality and if it, it looks like we're trying to, you know, answer, and, and answer what they're asking for, um, reducing it a little bit would, would maybe build some trust.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Finch?
I want to make sure we understand what, um, Mr. McGlorino said. Um, what he, what he said was the value of our district, the property value is in the billions in our zone. And so that's why the, the negligibility to the taxpayer would be small. The impact to Deer Valley would be great. There's a huge difference between fifteen and thirteen from a collection standpoint. So it will impact the district and we can get that number for you for the Friday update because that's really what you're debating, uh, to reduce it, uh, because remember it's a thirty-three million dollar adventure, so two percent, it's a real number. So the actual collection, um, from the taxpayer would be small, but the impact on Deer Valley would be great. So we can get that number for you on, on a Friday update.
President Carver, if I can put that, uh, quanti- quantify that for you. Um, each percentage of the override, um, would save the average homeowner about twenty-eight dollars a year. But each percentage provides over two million dollars, almost two point two million dollars to the district annually. So the twenty-eight dollar savings annually for the average homeowner, um, generates two point two million dollars worth of revenue for us.
I appreciate you clearing that up because I, I do believe I wasn't the only one that thought when you said negligible, you meant that it wouldn't make that big of a difference to us uh, as a district. So that's, that's, that's helpful and I think it's important for the community to understand what each percentage point means to them and, and their bottom line. Um, but yeah, we don't need to keep doing that. Dr. Pack?
Uh, just to follow up, Mr. McGlorino, w- when you're saying Westmech will vote to en- Uh, just to follow up, Mr. Migliarino, w- when you're saying Westmech will vote to increase property owners that live in Deer Valley District, if we reduce it a percent, we'll save twenty-eight dollars from the Deer Valley pot of money, but we would pay more if the Westmech passes. As a tax bill.
President Carver, Dr. Pack, yes, that's, uh, and that would be true with any taxing authority, right? I mean, uh, Westmech just happens to also be an educational, uh, entity, but the, um, um, but there are other taxing authorities that are on, uh, individual's, uh, property tax bill.
Thank you, Mr. Migliarino. Anything further? If not, we will move on to public comment, Mrs. Taylor? No public comment, okay. Governing Board reports. Uh, is Mr. Botfield still on the line? Would he like to give a report first since he's on the phone? I think I got him. Did I mute him?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, do you, uh, Board Report?
You want me to do a report?
Please, yep. Your Board Report if you want, or you can pass.
No, I, I wanted to do one report on the fabulous art show that Boulder Creek had. Um, it's something that should be done through the entire district. It was fabulous. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to chat.
Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Ms. Simicheck?
Thank you, President Carver. Um, yeah, just a few things. Um, I, I know that I'm not always physically present in these meetings and I've shared that before. Um, it, it's a little bit of a challenge ju- juggling my schedule now, but hopefully as things start to calm down a little bit, um, I'll be able to make sure that I'm here for these meetings. Um, that being said, uh, last month, we celebrated our fine arts in our schools and it was amazing because all five of our, uh, Deer Valley High School Performance Dance classes performed at the Capitol, including, um, so Deer Valley High School, Barry Goldwater, Mountain Ridge, Boulder Creek, and who am I missing? Deer Valley?
Goldwater?
And Goldwater, which is, which is where my daughter performed. So anyway, it was really great. And I got to see Mr. Carver there too. So all my worlds collided and it was beautiful and I'm so proud of all of our high schools. Our kids are incredible. Um, last Tuesday, um, Mr. Kilgore and, uh, staff members and several families joined me at the Capitol to meet my office and then I had the opportunity to introduce them floor, which was really special. Uh, and then, you know, just a couple of things, I want to congratulate all of our A-plus schools rated, uh, campuses so far. This is amazing uh, results for our district. Um, happy School Library Day to our librarians last Friday. Um, and thank you for being such, uh, amazing, uh, school librarians for our schools. They're so incredibly important, so thank you. Um, and then congratulations to our, our two new principals, as we mentioned earlier. Ms. Lanis was my vice principal when I taught at Norterra Canyon, so it's really special to see her here. And also, um, be moving to, uh, Lead at Sierra Verde and I, I know that her and, um, Ms. Lanis are going to do an amazing job um, at their new schools. Spent last week, at the end of the week through last, I got back last, um, at the NSBA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, which was an incredible experience as always. And I plan to, what I would like to do is share my findings and just a little bit about what I learned when I was there, um, at the next board meeting. Just haven't had a chance to put it together since I got back. Um, but I do want to share that out to our community so they can see what we were able to attend and learn from and, and who we could make, uh, connections with. So with that, um, I think that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simicheck. Mrs. Fisher?
Because I really want to make sure this one topic gets on, I'm going to go ahead and forego any, uh, of my requests that have already been made, that have been made repeatedly and you have them. Whether they're honored or not. You know, going to the NSBA, you, you, you get so much from so many different perspectives and so many people ask questions. Um, and for the individuals who have said, I want to know what you went to, when you went to, where you went to, why you went to. Um, I will go ahead and boast everything I went to, um, absolutely, and if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer any. But, um, one of the very last, uh, well, it's not one of the very last, but it's one of the most important that I attended, actually. But, um, and it was kind of odd, I almost didn't go to it just because it was, uh, uh, from the Bo Biden Foundation. Um, although I, I almost wonder as to why this is the direction of that foundation, but it was an amazing, um, production. Uh, it was an amazing presentation. I wish our district would get the training direct regarding the grooming of children and the grooming process. Because so often people just think, you know, you think of a, a child predator or someone who would dare to hurt a child. And I don't know about anybody else, but in my mind, I think, ew, gross, they're a horrible, awful person, they're mean, they're all these things. Um, and reality is, they're not. Um, the person that is the groomer, groomer is, uh, grooming is, is deception. Um, and so they are deceptive. And as deceptive, they are the light, um, in the room. They're the ones that ingratiate themselves to everyone. They're the ones that the kids want to cling to, the kids want to be around because this is what they do. They, they groom children, um, not by being mean or being evil, but by being awesome. Um, you know, the, y- as, as the questions came up in this class and were like, well, you know, the teachers are reporters and teachers and this, they gave out a lot of statistics, you know, one of the things is, um, the most reporting is done by teachers. The most under-reporting is done by teachers. Because they're the ones that are the closest to it and, and, you know, so several board members said, you know, if we were to say that, we, we would really make our teachers angry that we said they were under-reporting. And the two people that were giving the, the presentation said, well, then let us say it to them so that they can hear what it is we're saying because once they started explaining what they meant and why the statistics are what they were, um, it really painted the picture and lets you realize confused we all are when it comes to this topic and why so many are, are abused and how they're groomed and brought into this fold. The other things that I thought were very, very telling is that, that they were very clear to all board members is stop letting them quit. Don't let them quit. Fire them. Make an example of them. Most cases will not be prosecuted ever. They will not be prosecuted, they will not win, they will get their certificates back if you let them leave. They also have said, which I thought was very telling, is there's multiple registries that you can look at, some that have a much lower threshold, um, that allow us to catch them first before they ever get the chance to be in our organization. I just thought it was fascinating how I thought I knew a lot about the topic and I went in thinking, okay, yeah, whatever. I realized how much I didn't know even after having researched for many years and learning about it. Um, and I really hope that people take the opportunity to look into this and look into, um, because, like I said, the only thing we can truly do is stop it before it happens because once it's happening, it's too late. Um, by the time you catch it, there's many that have been injured long before. So anyways, um, I'll bring back other stuff and go back to requesting what's good, but that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Dr. Pack?
So I had the pleasure of attending the Night Under the Stars at Inspiration Mountain and visiting with Dr. Shorting. My friends are starting to catch on when I call them up and say, what are you doing? That, I'm looking for a wingman, but it's, it's fun to take people with me and, and just rave about the school and the art. The band was amazing and they made these really cool art lights out of water bottles. It was really neat. So that was exciting. Um, I also went to the NSBA con- uh, convention. I'm on the plane, I read half of the ASBA book, only found one typo. And, um, but the classes I took were, the sessions I took were very helpful, especially for a new board member. They have a ready, set, govern tract. So I took most of those, um, A Path to Effective Board Meetings, Kenet's Literacy Journey, one of my favorites, um, Achieving Success for All, uh, Ready, Set, Govern, Roles and Responsibilities, also Parliamentary Procedure, uh, The Autism Spectrum and The Grown Ups Who Come With Them, that was very interesting. Um, How Tech and AI Are Impacting the Future, Characteristics of an Effective School Board, uh, and The Importance of Policy and Self-Care of All Board Members. And then one that I went to, uh, was a Superpower Squad, Superhero Squad, um, How to Build a Strong Relationship with Your Superintendent and School Board, and I got these really cool bookmarks that I'm going to share with my, my board members. Um, but Building Relationships, Retreats, which I'm looking forward to, Communication, Community Listening Sessions, Conferences, Connection Before Content, Superintendent Evaluation, Listeners and Learners, Walk Through Observations and Strategic Moves. Um, the very last event was an event, uh, a wrap-up, grand finale, Art and Education and Inspiration. And I was two degrees of Kevin Bacon and his brother Michael Bacon, so it was a great, a great, um, conference. Um, I do have a meeting scheduled next week during my spring break to talk with Dr. McCusker and learn, um, more about sped, um, scenarios. And I'll be visiting, I think, five campuses uh, during my spring break, uh, to go see all the great schools in the Deer Valley District, so I'm looking forward to that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. Uh, I can report that on the second, we had the first of, I believe, two days of Mandarin Speech Competition down here at the District Office. The first day was the, uh, Kinders through, I believe it was third. And I'm telling you, we do an amazing job in this district with the Mandarin program. It'd blow your mind to hear these kids uh, rattle off everything that they've learned about Mandarin. So if you ever get a chance and you see it advertised, um, go down and listen, see what, see what's being said and how it's being said and it just, I, I can't possibly imagine all the extra things, you know, how art and music help children learn other aspects of their education. Learning how to speak Mandarin really has to unlock some other things inside your brain to help you figure out the rest of it because these kids they're going to be rocket scientists. Um, also on the second, the, uh, City of Peoria had its State of the City of Dress with, uh, Mayor Beck. And I went to go hear what the mayor has to say because we do have schools in the, in the city of Peoria and and tell you what, Mayor Beck's doing an amazing job planning for the future. Infrastructure plans, uh, they've completely embraced what's going on out there around TSMC and they've acquired land from the state land trust so that they can start their development projects as well. And everybody's gearing up for all the growth that's going to happen out here in this part of the valley for the next couple of years. So for those of you who live in the city of Peoria, the mayor's doing a great job, uh, is building a new water treatment plant. They got infrastructure going on, they've got, but they received a grant to install a hundred and eighty safety slash security cameras throughout the city so that they can do real-time, um, cran- crime analyzation. And they've had a lot of successes just within the first week. I believe you said he caught one of the FBI's Most Wanted off of the cameras that they've put in, so they've got a lot of great things going on in Peoria. I was able to attend the NSBA with, uh, my three counterparts up here. And I did hear the community when they said, we want to know what you're doing and what you're learning. I did post that on my social media, on my personal page on social media, so if you can't see it, I apologize. I'll just run down real quick uh, the titles of the classes that I attended. On Friday, uh, which was pre-conference, I attended A Path to Effective Board Meetings, A Collaborative Partnership Building, Monitoring and Maintaining Family and Community. Uh, the general session, there was the keynote speaker is Melissa Stockwell. For those of you don't, don't know Melissa Stockwell, she was the first female amputee in the Iraq War. Uh, she served in the army and when she came home, she had an entirely different outlook on life, you know, she went through the standard, um, thought process of loss that we go through when we experience something so tragic as, as losing a limb. But then she realized that she's been given another chance. And one of the, one of the funny slash cute things that her and her family and friends do is they have Little Leg Birthday Day, so, um, the appendage that she lost was her left leg and she just has a nub there and it is so funny because they have a birthday for the day that she lost her leg because that is when her life changed and she's become a Paralympian triathlete and she's won more medals than most of us could probably carry around her neck, so it was, it was very uplifting. Um, a blue point, uh, Blueprint for Board Excellence on Saturday. Uh, Building Bridges, Best Practices for Effective Collaboration Between Boards and Superintendents. Followed that, uh, Federal Changes and Impact on Locals with some of the executive orders that come out. And I, I realized when I was in this class that not too unlike a lot of the things that we teach in our classrooms, it's not the information, but how it's pres- who's presenting it, right? So it's not necessarily the curriculum that's evil, it's not necessarily the information that's evil, it's how it's being presented. And I use the term evil not to imply that there's anything go- wrong going on in that class, but, uh, they had a certain viewpoint uh, that I didn't share of, of, of some of the things that were going on, but it was educational to hear where they were coming from because as I mentioned in one of my social media posts was just that, um, I, I, I think we do ourselves a disservice as human beings when we don't experience and try to understand what other people have to say about things that are going on in life. So Sunday, Enhancing School Safety and Security, Creating the Conditions for Family-School Community Partnerships, and Social Media and Mental Health, A Scientific-Based Curriculum. Um, and that was an amazing class. The lady that led it was a second-year college student that has already published a book, Sixty Days to Disconnect. And she talked about the different things that happen to, especially a young mind, when they spend way too much time on these things, and it was very informative, very educational, took a lot of pictures and I was educating my wife as I was going through that class because we have a lot of young grandkids in our family. And, um, so anyway, that's what I've been busy doing. Thank you very much for your time. Dr. Finch?
Well, I have good news. Uh, Dr. Scott Spurgeon, the Westmech Superintendent, watches our show. My phone started blowing up. He's giving me all these tax charts and stuff and he's going crazy. The short version is there will not be a tax increase when they go out for their bond. They, obviously if your valuation of your house goes up, then obviously it'd be an increase for that, but not from the taxing perspective, so so make sure they know that. Okay, I'm on it, buddy. I'm on it. Um, yes, the, um, there was some discussion again about, uh, community engagement, uh, obviously the the process that Jim goes through, uh, with surveys, uh, takes a, a whole year to do. And then we listened to our data, listened to the community, and that's why we just went for the override and not both. So, um, that's what they suggested because we, uh, believe they do support teachers, they do support student, uh, activities, et cetera. So, um, that's why we separated it. And I think also too, the community can't see the bulldozers out there yet, so they can't see why we need anything out there. So I think until the bulldozers start going, then it'll, it'll make more sense for a bond. So that's what we, when we listen to the community, that's what we did. We s- uh, separated them. The of the, the mention about, uh, grooming training or, um, inappropriate conduct with students. All of our staff have to go through that every year. Uh, it's part of their mandatory training, so uh, we also agree that, that, um, all the training we can give, the better. We're going to be starting up our, uh, boundaries discussion, um, that'll, Jim's going to fire that up before he heads out the door. And, uh, that'll go all the way through till the beginning of, of the school year. And that way, uh, we can get ready for whatever happens in our future. Um, so that, uh, they're probably, their task for the first couple laps will be just uh, finding out the hotspots of, in our district that we need to address. Uh, because once the, once the bulldozers start, everything's going to change in that zone. There would be another anthem coming out of the ground. Um, I think I put it in my, uh, Friday update, but I'm going to be, I was elected to be the president of the Superintendent's Association for ASA next year, and I'll also represent Arizona, um, uh, on the A, double ASA, uh, Board, uh, which is really de- dealing with the politics of the national perspectives. So I should have a little better perspective on what's happening, um, in Washington DC for us as we try to predict the future. Our, uh, OC Beach and Deer Valley Volleyball, High School, um, volleyball, uh, boys team are ranked number one, I believe. I believe our OC boys might be as well, not one, they're two in volleyball. Softball's three and I think all six A teams are in the top ten. So, um, for you having a chance to go see some of our athletics at the moment, um, I've always said this, all of our programs are on the rise and it's neat to see, um, coaches- all of our programs are on the rise, and it's neat to see, um, coaches in the right spots, on the right seat of the bus, uh, making a difference with kids. And if you also saw Jed Dunn became Coach of the Year in, uh, for a, this year, in, uh, Deer Valley High School Basketball Team. So, uh, all the musicals and those types of, uh, productions are happening right now. Um, if you missed them, um, they, uh, they are worth seeing, they're as good as what you see professionally. So, uh, come check them out and get a chance to see our concerts, uh, and student productions in choir and in, um, bands. We do a great job there. National Pair Pro Week was last week, and so I think our Pair Pro's a big part of our machine. Uh, the AP, uh, the National Assistant Principals Week was this week. So make sure you give a fist bump to, uh, our Assistant Principals, we put them on social media every day, so you can find out who's doing where. And our high school kids took our ACT today. So that is really the culmination. All the other state tests are progress tests. ACT is a nationally-normed Criterion Reference Test. So it actually is, that's what you're aiming for. So all of these other proficiency tests and growth tests are all getting ready for your ACT, because in Arizona, everyone takes it. So, um, I hope the kids did a good job today and started that, and, uh, hope to see the results for the, um, in the school year. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Future board meetings are listed on the Deer Valley School District website. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Have a good evening, everybody, thank you for attending and watching at home.